Senator, invocation. Is there anybody from the alliance here for invocation?
He emailed.
He did, okay. Alright, so Matt, you're gonna fill in for him?
Yes.
So, please stand for our invocation and remain standing for our pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us this privilege to gather tonight in this free country, and we ask that you bless us tonight to make wise decisions that are in the best of all interests of our community. We also ask you to watch over the rest of the world with all the turmoil that's going on, and just help everyone to make the best decisions and help all the people that need it in this world right now, which is a lot. We also ask you to watch over our first responders, both here in Casa Grande, as well as all over the world, especially our military who are deployed on the front lines, our Border Patrol agents, our police and fire, all across the nation. We also ask that you help with the fires burning and all the tragedies going on, but we know that we'll be stronger for it. And all these we ask in your name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Bob. And Mr. Powell, I apologize. I threw you off because I did the roll call before the pledge and the invocation, so that's my bad.
Okay, so are we down to...
I think, I think we already did the roll call, right?
Yes.
Laurie, have you got that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, involved with the minutes, I move approval of the city council regular meeting minutes from September 7th, and to accept for the record the Park and Recreation Advisory Board minutes from June 24th, and the, also accept for the record the Casa Grande Planning and Zoning Commission minutes from August 5th, 2021, as presented.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Minutes are approved. Thank you, Mr. Powell. Claims against the city?
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated September 1st through 15th, 2021, as presented.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Claims are approved. Meeting agenda approval. Any changes? Larry, anything from staff?
We have none, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, anybody? Okay. Seeing none, then I'll take a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Move, no special presentations. We have consent agenda items on tonight's agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there any changes from counsel? Staff, yes, sir.
I would move the removal of G8, G11, G14, and G16.
So G8, 11?
Uh huh. 14 and 16.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no one else, then I will entertain a motion to approve with the exception of G8, G11, G14, and G16.
Correct. Okay.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the consent agenda with the exception of G8, G11, G14, and G16.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Alright, then since the next items on the agenda are G8, Mr. Powell?
I was wondering, accepting a proposal from Robert Half International to provide for temporary staffing and related services for the city's finance department, which is identified as a successful bidder based on the city's reliance on another governmental entity, request for bids for the same item as permitted by and in compliance with this section. I was wondering basically what, I'm not familiar with the, with the temporary staffing, and maybe you have more of an explanation what that involves or what's involved with Hello?
Hi, good evening.
Hi, Joe.
Hi. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Powell, we have used temporary staffing before. As a matter of fact, the finance came before this body to request the use of Acro Staffing Agency as a staffing agency for finance. We are seeking to utilize the services of Robert Half. As a matter of fact, we have staff from Robert Half, but in the event the amount spent on that contract would should exceed the amount that is allowable, we decided to bring this matter before the council tonight.
Well, thank you for the explanation. I was just out of curiosity why. I wanted to hear what the status was on this. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Any other comments or questions on this? Seeing none, then I will call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 3297, an ordinance of the mayor and city council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal from Robert Half Internationals, Inc., to provide for the procurement of temporary staffing and related services, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance 3297 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Alright, next item is G11.
Mayor McFarland, G11, I was curious from Paul, what, basically you're taking to combine all 12 lots in one lot, and just out of curiosity, again, what the need for is to combine those?
The, all of the 12 lots are proposed to be purchased by Harvest Corporation, and they wish to combine them to one lot to build a large marijuana cultivation facility on that property. So they need more land for their facility than they can do, than they can put on any individual lot.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments on this one? Okay, seeing none, then I will ask for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 2825.183.4, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the re-subdivision of Central Arizona Comerence Park, generally located at the northeast corner of Burris Road and Peters Road, to combine 12 lots into one lot.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of resolution number 2825.183.4 as presented.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Alright, next item is G14. Mr. Powell?
G14, I just was hoping for a little bit more of an explanation. The, it's G Diamond Ranch is what it's involved with, and there's 91, 317 lots to be planted. 91 lots are less than 7,000 feet. But I was happy, Paul, because it says there's 91 lots that are greater than 8,000 feet, which is exactly our PAD requirement. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
So did you have any questions for him, or just...
No, I would move approval of...
Okay. Then let me call for a resolution number, please, Gloria. If there's no further, anybody else has any further discussion? Okay. Can I get a resolution number, please?
Resolution number 2825.211, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the final plat for G Diamond Ranch, parcels D1, D2, E1, and E2, requiring the provision of a financial guarantee to secure the satisfactory construction, installation, and dedication of the required, dedication of the required improvements, and the timing for completion thereof, and authorizing execution by the city manager of supporting documents.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 2825.211 as presented.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mc, Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Alright, next item is G16.
Mayor McFarland, G16 is kind of another pat on the back for, for the planning department. Setbacks on the Cottonwood Ranch Parcel F, final plat located generally at the southeast corner, and due to non-compliance with the required setbacks for construction, the site plan approved by the planning department reflects the home to have a minimum side of 10 foot. However, the residence was built with a 6.1. Accordingly, track M will be reduced from 10 point to 6 foot, and the lot 157 will be increased by width by 4 foot to allow for the required side yard setback. Bless you, Paul. That's what I was very happy about. It's exactly what should have happened, so thank you.
Anybody else? Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, then I will call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 2825.92.1, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a final plat for the re-subdivision of lots 157 and track M at Cottonwood Ranch Parcel F, subdivision located generally at the southeast corner of Men's Lanes and John's Drive, and through an amendment to the final plat.
Somebody want to...
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 2825.92.1 as presented.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Alright, the next item on our agenda is item H. That is public comments. So this is the opportunity for anyone from the public who would like to address the council. I would ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Also remember that these are non-agendized items, and therefore the council cannot reply or respond to the, any comments or questions you might have, but we can direct staff to, to get back in touch with you and hopefully answer any questions or concerns that you might have. So at this point in time, then also when you come up, please state your name and your address for our records. I do have some speak cards here. Is it Mary Hank? Hank, I hope I said that right. Mary? Mary H?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, how do you say it, Mary?
I say it, Heenick.
Oh, Heenick, okay. Thank you.
And this is in regards to the Elks Lodge?
Can you state your address and stuff for our records?
I'm sorry, my name is Mary Heenick. My address is 1840 East Bird Street, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Thank you.
Okay. I just want to speak on behalf of the Elks Lodge to, this is an agenda item, and it is, we are so honored to be a part of the historic occasion that you are going to approve today. And our lodge has been an all-American lodge for the past two years. Only eight lodges in the United States have that privilege, and it's given because of our contributions and activities to our community. It was 650-plus dedicated members that are very passionate about what we do. And what was really fun was at the Historic Commission, I was there, and they talked about in 1957 how all the movers and the shakers in Casa Grande belonged to the Elks Lodge, and so many decisions were made around the tables in the Elk Lodge and around the bar. So I just wanted to thank you for your consideration. Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you. It is a public hearing later, so there'll be opportunities to speak at the public hearing. But since you've already spoken for it, then that's, we'll note that.
I can talk forever, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
And then I have another one here for Anthony Amato. It's a group. They get 12 minutes or no?
They look familiar, Mayor.
I know, I think I've seen him before.
Anthony Amato, 1345 East 12th Street.
Delaney Dickey, 1680 East Angelica Drive.
Landon Moglia, 2215 North Magdalena Place.
Tia Ray Lewis, 415 West 10th Street.
Alright.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Delaney Dickey, and I am president of the Casa Grande Youth Commission. I am here with Anthony Amato, Secretary of the Casa Grande Youth Commission, and Tia Ray Lewis and Landon Moglia, Commissioners of the Casa Grande Youth Commission.
We are very glad to be able to update you on the progress of some of this term's priorities.
We had our monthly meeting this past Saturday and made great progress in our planning of the Arizona Youth Government Summit, for which we are now looking for sponsors for expenses of the event, including food, drink, merchandise, and a possible scholarship. We are also currently working on reaching out to a contact at Senator Mark Kelly's office on the matter of speaking at the event, a development that we are very excited about.
We would also like to thank Councilwoman McBride for attending the past meeting of ours and assisting in her many subjects of expertise. We would also like to briefly shout out to our three great advisors for their assistance in the success of our commission.
We were very glad to see the progress, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council are making in the revamping of our city's boards and commission systems, particularly when related to the addition of youth representatives to certain boards.
We are also happy to announce our upcoming Fall Day of Shredding that will be taking place at the First American Credit Union on October 23rd.
Lastly, we are very thankful to Mr. Mayor and those members of the council that have been in talks with the high school district on excusing the absences of those in attendance at the League of Cities and Towns Annual Conference, which has become a surprisingly contentious issue. We are glad to be given the opportunity to schedule a presentation with the school board later this year, explaining our presence in the community and the city government. And we are very thankful to the mayor and the members of the council for the interaction and support we have, they have shown throughout this term, and we look forward to a great term of service to Casa Grande together. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, guys.
Before you sit down, I just want to announce that Ms. Dickey carried the flag for the city of Casa Grande at Cities and Towns.
Okay, is there anyone else? I think I saw another hand out there. Yes, ma'am. Please come forward and state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind.
Thank you, and my name is Nancy Wood, and it's 513 East Beckel Road, Casa Grande, Arizona. And I just wanted to address the city council and bring up the attention and the concerns I have for the burrowing owls in Casa Grande. And as you are approving a lot of the development that is coming to Casa Grande, I would like you to consider how you address how the developers check and survey for the owls on their property as they break ground and start their construction, because the owls are dependent upon living in the ground. A lot of people aren't aware, and I was hoping to bring awareness and education to the difficulty that they have with the development. I have nothing against the development. I just would like more emphasis on considering for the developers to do the surveys and follow the game and fish guidelines for checking for the owls before they start breaking ground so that they aren't buried in the ground. Unfortunately, the owls take over burrows that they haven't made, and so if they're inside the burrows when there's construction started and heavy equipment and cars and traffic, they can get crushed in the ground and they can't get back out and they die. So I was hoping that you would consider, and I'm not talking about any specific developer or anything, this is pretty much citywide because there are a lot of them throughout the city. And tonight, you know, I know that there are owls on the D Diamond Ranch area. So that is something that that developer would need to address and check for the owls that are in that area before they start their construction. And I just was hoping that you would make it a little more aware for them across the board, wherever they were building in the city of Casa Grande, to look out for them. And just have the public be more aware that, you know, they are very tied to their locations. They're very stubborn, and so when they're used to living in an area that they've lived in for a long time, they don't disperse very easily. So I was just hoping that I could bring that attention to the city council. So thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Make sure we get her name and number, and then we can follow up with what our process is. That way then she can have some comfort there, and maybe she could even help us with names of people we can put developers in touch with that might be able to help, you know, identify where these burrowing owls might be located. Larry, your staff will follow up with that? Okay. Alright, thank you. Is there anyone else out there tonight who would like to, yes, sir, please come forward, state your name and your address?
My name is Brad Workman. I live at 928 North Brown Avenue, just right there. I don't know if this is the appropriate place to just bring attention to it, but they rebuilt that park there. Love it. It's a great place. It has made Brown Avenue since it's the only one that connects to McCartney. It's made it kind of a racetrack. I live on the corner where we have a two-way stop sign and the other way is free to move, and I regularly watch cars blow that stop sign at high rates of speed. You guys have put up speed-detecting cameras in the palm trees, which has kind of made it a game for the people that are doing it to see how fast they can go. I just wanted to bring it to the attention. I know you guys are probably working on it, but for us with young kids, it's kind of become a thorn in my side, not being able to let them be in the front yard at all because of the reckless drivers that are going up and down the street at all times of the night and day. So I just wanted to bring attention. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Larry, we can let traffic know about that and potential... Mr. Chief McCrory, too. We'll make note of that. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else? Alright, well, thanks, thanks to everybody who got up and spoke tonight. Appreciate comments, and we will follow up where necessary. I will close the public comments section now, and we'll move to our award of contracts, which is item I on our agenda. And let's start with I-1, ordinance number 3300. Kevin?
Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute an agreement, service agreement with Kaufman Associates in an amount not to exceed $108,031 to prepare an environmental assessment of five acres of land on parcel number 504-03-008A. This is a piece of property that sits to the southwest of the rodeo grounds. You actually access it in the same area that you access our archery range, which is directly west of the rodeo grounds. Staff has identified these five acres to develop a parachute landing zone. This is in a direct response to our issue with the FAA and the development of our corrective action plan. We are procuring this through a general, an airport general services contract that the city council approved, and that's contract number 0121-4, with the understanding that the individual projects, as they come up, would come back to council for scope and fee, and that's what we're doing here. They will perform the duties of this environmental assessment for this property so that it meets all the requirements of the NEPA, which is the, I know I have it somewhere here, the National Environmental Protection Act for the FAA, so that we can hopefully get our corrective action plan approved, and then bring us back into compliance and become grant-eligible in the very near future. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, is I-2 related?
It is not.
Okay, alright. Bob?
Kevin, what is involved in, in the environmental study, and what's the ultimate result or plan for that property? Are we gonna grade it, or, or just leave it alone as LZ, or...
Actually, following the direction of the FAA, we've already graded the area and created the landing zone. Now we have to go back and do the environmental assessment. And what that does is it makes sure that we identify and address any environmental issues that might be there, whether that be environmental impacts to the surrounding area, any culturally sensitive items that might be found there. We just have to go through the process. It's a very public outreach process so that we ensure that we're not doing something that's gonna have a negative impact on the surrounding area. So that's pretty much what it is.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions? Please say any questions.
No, I'm good, Mayor.
Okay. Alright, seeing none, then I will call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 3300, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from Kaufman Associates, Inc., to provide an environmental assessment, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 3300 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Alright, next item on the agenda is I-2, consider approval of ordinance number 3301.
Thank you. Staff recommends... Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize a total spending authority of not to exceed $500,000 and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Kaufman and Associates in an amount of $482,274 to prepare the airport's master plan update. City council authorized staff to apply for ADOT aeronautical grants to complete the airport master plan through resolution 5281. Staff has accepted the reimbursable grants and is now ready to begin this project. And again, we're going to be using the five-year Airport General Services contract that you previously approved through ordinance 3249, with the understanding that each of these projects would come back once we had scope and fee for these projects. And the objective of the airport master plan is to provide the community and the public officials with proper guidance for future development, which will satisfy aviation demands and be wholly compatible with the environment. The airport users and tenants, local community representatives, city staff, Arizona Department of Transportation, their aeronautics group, Federal Aviation Administration, and Kaufman Associates will be identified as the members of the planning advisory committee. And the airport master planning process will be a very public process, and we will have public outreaches with those tax members and the public so that we can get their input and really let the community and the airport users drive what this master plan looks like. Now, clearly, we already have an existing master plan, so this will be an opportunity to go in, take a fresh look at that, look at the new demands that are being placed on the airport to make sure that we have that in our plan so that when we need to take affirmative steps when development occurs, we have it in place and we don't have to draw out that process. So we did budget for this in this year's budget. And the grant that we're approving, Eric, excuse me, ADOT portion of that is $450,000, and then the city's portion of that is 10%, $50,000. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So it's basically ADOT-funded?
Yes.
Good. Any questions for Kevin?
Kevin, can you remind us the timeline on this?
This is going to take about 12 to 16 months to complete. I don't think it'll take longer than that, but it is a pretty long, intensive process. The last time we did it, I think it took us 18 months.
And you're working with the airport advisory board?
Yes, yes. And they approved this at, I think, their meeting, two meetings ago. They approved bringing this to the city council.
Okay, good. Yeah, use them as much as you can.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Lisa, anything?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay. All right, seeing no other comments or questions, then I will call for an ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number 3301. An ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from Kaufman Associates, Inc., to update the Casa Grande Municipal Airport Master Plan, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance number 3301 as presented. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next is I-3. Consider approval of ordinance number 3302.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, staff is recommending the authorization for the purchase, or I should say authorization, the sale of real property, Lot 4 in Phase 3 of the Airport Industrial Park, authorizing the expenditure of public funds for reasonable and customary closing costs, and authorizing the execution of documentation by the city manager. 2006, the city approved and recorded 26 lot plat for Phase 3 in the Airport Industrial Park. Today, the city has approximately 23 of those lots still remaining for sale. The city has received an offer on Lot 4, which is platted about 1.98 acres at force for $108,900 an acre from 42 Real Estate LLC. The purpose is to construct a approximately 7,700-square-foot distribution facility that will employ between 16 and 20 individuals. The city will receive, ultimately, the city will receive approximately $215,622 for the purchase. I stand ready to answer any questions.
Bob?
Is there a requirement for development once they buy this property? Or is it? Yes.
Councilmember Hoddleston, yes, there is. We're working with the draft of the purchase agreement, but typically what we've included in there is a timeframe for construction.
Okay.
And so with the authorization you've provided, the city manager will fine-tune that purchase agreement, but there is going to be some language in there that encourages the construction.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Matt?
Is this an aeronautic-related company or just a?
It is a logistics-related company. Lot 4 is situated in the westernmost part of the Airport Industrial Park, so
It's not one of our airport direct access lots. Let's get some stuff out there. Been trying to sell it for a long time.
We're working on it.
It's coming.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay. Lisa, anything?
No, I'm good.
All right.
Thank you.
Then I'll entertain an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 3302. An ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the sale of real property, Lot 4, in the Donovan M. Kramer Senior Industrial Park, located at the Casa Grande Municipal Airport, authorizing expenditure of public funds for reasonable and customary closing cost and execution of documentation by the city manager.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3302 as presented. Second.
Richard, I just want to say thank you for your presentation. Kevin, you too. All right, I have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next item is I-4. Consider approving resolution number 5340.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is kind of a fun one. So staff recommends the mayor and city council award a contract for professional design services to J-2 Engineering and Environmental Design LLC for a design concept report documents for the Florence Boulevard Streetscape Design in an amount not to exceed $130,000. Staff conducted interviews with five firms following the request for qualifications. J-2 was selected by staff due to their vast experience and the quality of past projects. Scope and fees were negotiated with J-2 for a final design concept report and are believed to be adequate and acceptable for the required design service. The Florence Boulevard Streetscape Design Project is intended to create a streetscape design from I-10 to Panal Avenue that will enhance the image and quality of life for the city of Casa Grande. The project will incorporate street layout, landscape, hardscape, parking, signage, branding, and other design aspects of streetscape and transportation design. The proposed project supports over 20 goals and 50 action steps of the 2030 General Plan to some degree, and is potentially seen as a catalyst to the Florence Boulevard and downtown revitalization. It also meets some objectives set forth in the council's strategic plan. Staff has ensured that citizens and stakeholders will play an important role in developing the design concept and are included within the scope of work. That includes two meetings with Planning Commission, two meetings with city council, and multiple other stakeholder meetings throughout the process. Do we have any questions?
I just, I have a couple of questions myself because this is something that I've been, I'm very interested in. And I want to make sure this rolls into a similar project for Panal Avenue. I know we have ADOT to deal with, but this should be a continuation, right? Is that part of our plan?
Yeah, I think in the future steps, we'll certainly want to expand whatever themes or design aspects.
Well, future's not like 10 years. A future is like a year to do.
Well, I mean, it depends on what our wallet looks like, I guess.
Well, I'm planting the seeds, so let's make sure it's in our plan.
Move forward with all that. We also have some signage, some entry monumentation stuff that's kind of tied to this, but we actually have set aside some funding to actually do some implementation of it after the design's complete. It will be a phased design project, and those phases could include adding Panal Avenue to the design.
All right, thank you. And then I would ask that you have a meeting or two, or at least maybe include arts and humanities in your conversation?
We've already, we've already included that.
Okay, I didn't hear them on your list, so that's why I was...
Yeah, I trimmed it down a little bit for the presentation, but we absolutely have them involved.
All right, just, yeah, please do. Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments? Yeah, Matt?
Just comment. Glad to see this happening. One thing I hear a lot from people, small business owners, especially on the Boulevard, is hey, can we get some sprucing up of everything? So it's time. And I want to thank the mayor because I know he pushes this down here at City Hall a lot. Also, I thought it was interesting how it has like three separate sections to kind of work your way into the city from, you know, more the business type and then into the downtown with some buffer in the middle. So I'm excited to see it and hopefully it helps our access for all the businesses and helps people know where to go to do their shopping. So I'm excited to see what's going on.
Yeah, definitely.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Lisa.
Lisa. And I just wanted to piggyback on that. Of course, this is exciting. You know, we definitely need to update, you know, these, this main arterial road into our city. So I'm really excited. And, you know, but of course, when we do projects like this, and obviously $130,000 isn't going to, you know, make all the, you know, changes. It is, it is a design service. So I just kind of wanted to get some realistic expectations just for those that are watching and they're, you know, on, of course, like you asked, Mayor, hey, what does this mean, one year, 10 years? But, but just kind of realistic, like, you know, what happens? You know, once this design, you know, how long does it design take? And then, you know, what happens after that? What is the process after this?
Sure. Councilmember Fitzgibbons, the design schedule is approximately nine to 12 months. And this is a design concept report. Shortly after that, we'll go straight into construction documents. We've set aside some CIP funds for potential implementation of portions of this. During the design, we will look at what portion might benefit Casa Grande the most and determine that during all the stakeholder process. And then we'll move into the construction documents for that portion and hopefully have some construction slated for, I would guess, 18 to 24 months potentially.
There, now you have it. You have it, Lisa. We got him on record. We have him on record, too.
This is being recorded.
Well, and like you said, you know, Matt, as far as, you know, the things the mayor's been working on with some of these marketing projects, you know, it's, you know, it's time, you know, that we invest in livening up, you know, our, you know, streets and showing this community that we are progressive, we are moving forward, we have these great businesses coming in. So, so it really is important. So I really do hope that we keep it, you know, as a priority and as we look into funding some of these in our CIP projects, you know, I think, I think it is something really important that we continue to look at. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Lisa. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, then I will call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5340. A resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from J-2 Engineering and Environmental Design LLC to provide design concept report documents for the Florence Boulevard Streetscape Project, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5340 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
I have found out something that the mayor is a farmer. He talked about planting seeds. So I'm going to vote along with the mayor. I vote yes.
Mayor Protem Hoddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Next, let's move to item L. The other, the other two items don't have any business, so let's move to item L. These are our public hearings, public meeting, public hearings. And we'll start with L-1.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Next item on the agenda is DSA 2100113 for the Casa Grande Valley Elks Lodge landmark sign designation. The site is located at 909 East Florence Boulevard. The site has been in existence, the site as well as the signs have been in existence since 1957. The site has four signs that were surveyed as part of the 2016 sign survey, all of which are considered in today's landmark sign designation. As part of the analysis to determine the eligibility of a landmark sign designation, staff reviewed the historic preservation element of the 2030 General Plan City Code, including the historic preservation ordinance and the landmark designation, as well as the landmark sign criteria that was created in the 2016 sign survey. Staff has determined that elk signs meet the criteria and to be designated as a landmark sign. Staff presented this to the Historic Preservation Commission on July 26, and the commission gave a favorable recommendation to the city council to designate the Casa Grande Valley Elks Lodge as a local historic sign landmark, DSA 2100113. That, that includes my presentation. And I just want to say thank you to Mary from the Elks Lodge for attending tonight, as well as attending the commission on July 26.
All right. Yes, thank you, Mary. Does anybody have any questions?
I got one comment.
Go ahead.
I think this is really cool to preserve this mid-century-type signage as well. And I want to welcome Jaclyn, it's her first presentation to the council. Did a great job. And she's a homegrown, local, young lady, and now she's working for the city, so.
You're welcome.
Excited to see that.
Good job. Mr. Powell?
I just want to compliment the Elks Lodge as, as been part of our community since 1957. But they've done so many good things for Casa Grande. And I can remember, they had the teenage dances there when I was in elementary school or in junior high. And the girls would all be on one side and the boys all on the other side lined up looking across there. And I had kind of a shock. The, there was this pretty girl on the other side I was watching. And so then, when the time came, I walked across and said, would you like to dance? And she said, they just announced this lady as choice. So I turned around and walked back. And I didn't have as much fun at the dance as I did, so.
All right, thank you for that, Mr. Powell. This is a public hearing. Are any other comments from the council?
No.
No. All right, this is a public hearing, so I will open the floor for anyone who would like to address the council on this subject. This is on considering designation of the Casa Grande Valley Elks, number 1957, to a historic landmark. Mary, you've already said, I think, I think you sold it in. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the hearing and we'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 3303. An ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, designating the Casa Grande Valley Elks Lodge, designating the Casa Grande Valley Elks Lodge, number 1957, signs as a local historical landmark and authorizing the city clerk to record all documents necessary to execute this ordinance with the Penale County Recorder's Office.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 13303 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, the next public hearing is item L2. This is on ordinance number 1178.412. You've got your whole department up here tonight, don't you, Paul?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This requested in front of you is for a zone change for 40 acres of property, currently zoned urban ranch, and the request is to I-1, which is the city's garden and light industrial zone district. The location of the property is on the south side of Hannah Road, west of Sunland Gin Road, and the I-1 zone will allow a much wider amount of uses compared to what's currently allowed in the urban ranch zone district. I-1 is more appropriate, considering the area's commerce and business general plan designation. And any development on this site would require consideration of a major site plan in front of the planning commission. In considering zone changes, there shall be three criteria that have to be evaluated at planning commission. These three criteria were discussed and they did recommend approval. Essentially, it's that the action's consistent with the general plan and it conforms with a range of identified uses, densities, and intensities of the general plan, and that the zone change is considered necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the city. Through the evaluation of this criteria, it was determined that this would be an appropriate zone district. I-1 is included as an appropriate zone district within the commerce and business general plan land use category. One of the action steps in the general plan is to develop economically competitive regional centers and also promote a wider range of uses than traditional commercial areas, including blended commercial and industrial sites. This is a good location for the variety of uses that are allowed in the I-1 zone district. There are some elements of the general plan that would have to be attended to at the time of development. The applicant doesn't have any specific plans for this site as of yet, so as I mentioned, the next step, should council approve this zone change, is for a major site plan to be presented, and staff in concert with the planning commission would review to ensure that it met these requirements, such as a maximum floor ratio of .35, at least 10% of open space, and also at the time of development, there would be the requirement for 40 feet of additional right-of-way abutting the site, or if deemed necessary by the city prior to development. Lastly, we do consider this necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the city. I-1 is appropriate and necessary due to the fact that specifically within this location, it does have nearby railroad and I-10 interchange access. At the August planning commission meeting, planning commission made a unanimous recommendation that city council should approve this zone change, subject to three specific conditions that's been forwarded within your RCA and incorporated as part of the ordinance. And that concludes my presentation.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Lisa, anything?
No, Mayor.
All right. This is a public hearing, so no more comments from the council. I will open the floor to the public. This is on rezoning from UR, which is urban ranch, to light industrial, which is down next to some of our light industrial now. And it's close to I-10, I-8 railroad. Seems appropriate. Anybody have any comments, questions, public? All right, seeing none, then I will close the public hearing and we'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.412, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from urban ranch to garden and light industrial on approximately 40 acres of the property generally located south of Hannah Road and west of Sunland Gin Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 1178.412 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
I'm voting yes, and I'm happy that, happy that it went to I-1 instead of I-2 when you're looking at industrial, so. And where it's positioned, I think I-1 fits it very well, so I vote yes.
Mayor Protem Haddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, the next item is L3. This is to consider our community development block grants for the program year 2020. Mary Ellen?
Which one? Hello, Mary.
This is action evaluation.
It is. This is our consolidated annual action, or performance and evaluation report. It's CAPER, and this covers July 20 through June 21. And as you recall, that includes a lot of the CARES funding. So we are recommending that you approve the program year 2020 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. The city of Casa Grande had prepared the CAPER report as required by the federal regulations. The report details project accomplishments as well as expenditures throughout the period for the Community Development Block Grant program. The purpose of the report is to measure what the extent of the jurisdictions meeting their priority, priority needs, goals, and strategies as outlined in our consolidated plan. A 15-day public comment period on the report began on September 1 through September 15. A copy of the plan was posted online and a hard copy was available in our office to give the public an opportunity to comment on the CAPER. No comments were received. So I just wanted to... Okay. So with the public services that we authorize for spending, this was the regular allocation money, so Seeds of Hope, they have their senior connections program, they've spent all of their allocation and they provided services to 23 seniors. They did have a slow start because of COVID. A lot of people were reluctant to come out to the center to have their lunches and activities, so felt 23 seniors was a pretty good outcome in the end. Against Abuse, for advocacy services for victims and homeless services, they spent their allocation and they served 73 women and children. The Casa Grande Police Department, they continued on with their South Side Crime Prevention Education Program, but again, had problems with COVID because they weren't out doing outreach in any of the communities. But they did finish, and Thomas Anderson said they really felt like they made an impact in the South Side and that 150 local residents would come out and participate annually with them. The Opportunity Tree, again, they spent their $10,000 allocation, they served 30 seniors. They also had issues with COVID because they weren't able to be onsite. They did a lot of stuff virtual with their seniors, so they felt like next, this coming year will be a better service for them. And Cara, they assisted 27 clients with $4,000. Again, they didn't have, they didn't allocate, they didn't spend all of their allocation because they used a lot of the CARES money instead of this normal allocation. So with the CARES money, Against Abuse, they were allocated money for the transitional housing. Unfortunately, they only served one individual with the rental assistance. They didn't get their allocation until December of 2020. They also had a hard time finding rentals for their, their people that were in the congregate setting that we were trying to get out of. They had a hard time finding affordable rentals for them. Dorothy Powell Senior Center, they served 98 seniors and provided 4,400 home-delivered meals. Seeds of Hope, they spent 51,258, they served 820 low to moderate income residents through the food bank and through the hot lunch program, and they provided 2,464 food boxes. And again, Community Action Human Resource Agency, they did spend their $50,172, and they served 123 clients, rental assistance, utility assistance, and the homeless in general. The Boys and Girls Club, they spent their allocation and they provided services to 63 low to moderate income schoolchildren. And again, Cara with their case manager, provided services to 54 clients. Housing and Neighborhood Improvements, with our owner occupied housing rehabilitation program, we completed three owner occupied projects, as well as one was under construction when, at the end of this report. We spent $148,000. Planning and Development with their code enforcement, they spent $60,189 and had 1,508 code violations in the low to moderate income neighborhoods. And of course, Planning Administration. Public Works, I wanted to just touch base on this. We have a lot of public facility improvements in progress, so hopefully by the end of this fiscal, or calendar year, we will have these completed. Public Works is continuing on their South Side sidewalk project. They're anticipating a completion date of December of 2021. The Cottonwood Garden Streetlight Project is in progress. A contractor has been hired, they've ordered the materials, and we're just waiting to get them in. They're anticipating a completion date of October of 2021. The West Side Sidewalk Project is out to bid. The Dorothy Powell Senior Center Renovations is preparing the RFQ, and the Rotary Park Improvements is in progress and estimated completion date in October of 2021. That's all I have.
Mary Ellen, do we perform any audit on any of these to make sure, you know, that the money's being spent properly? Because we're kind of all over in terms of dollars that were spent versus number of people who benefited?
Right.
And some of them look pretty high versus the number of people who got the service. I just, and I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it, I'm just asking if we audit that.
Yes.
Because I know there's some federal requirements in there, too, as well, so.
Right. We have a monthly report that we ask for how many services they're providing. So a lot of the, I'm just gonna take like Dorothy Powell Senior Center. They service the same people every month, so if you want an unduplicated account, then we ask them at the end for that.
So like the 123 people, they helped them a lot of times?
Correct.
Okay.
Potentially, they could, yes.
Okay.
And I asked them on this particular report to give it to me, unduplicated.
Maybe then we could look at it like how many times they issued service, if that might give us a better per-service cost, or?
We probably have that. I, this information is what I have to put into the system, into the HUD system, because they're asking for individuals, not duplicated services. But I asked them to give me the roundabout number, so you kind of knew like how many food boxes were delivered and that type of thing.
All right. Like, hey, how many times did they actually help somebody, right? It could have been the same person 10 times.
Correct.
But that counts in my mind. That counts as somebody's spending time helping somebody.
Correct. They all have to keep data on each individual person, so they're...
Maybe that's a different way to look at it, if we could maybe look at that. If it's gonna be a pain, don't, but just from my standpoint, I look at numbers and I look at number of people helped.
Right.
I'd like to see how many times they actually did service, or they performed service for the money. That would be a different way.
So you want the, you want duplicated numbers?
Yes.
You want to see a total?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I do have that.
Yeah, I mean, okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Mr. Powell?
One other thing, Rotary Park was mentioned. Is there a way we could get the entrance to not be an alley?
The plan is for it to come, they'll have their own entrance.
Yeah.
Okay, they're gonna change it so?
And some parking, too, right?
A lot of parking.
And parking, too.
Okay.
For the trailhead there, too.
Yeah.
It's cleaned up, though.
It looks great. It's just, it's just got that alley you drive by all the trash cans to get to it, but...
No, it'll come straight off, and then also in the parking there, it'll be handicap accessible parking.
Okay, good.
Lisa?
Good, good.
Let me see. Donna?
I'm, oh.
You wanted to say something, Lisa?
Oh, yes. Okay, um, yes, Mary, I was just wondering, I know you mentioned in your report, there was several agencies that, due to COVID, obviously, there were some limitations on providing services. So how does that affect us with the federal requirement? I mean, is it, does it hurt us at all? I would imagine with COVID, obviously, you know, I mean, I'm sure there's some flexibility and everything, but I was just curious how it affects us, does the money, is it okay for it to roll over to the next year, the allocations for 2020? And is it gonna hurt us at all, or any of the agencies?
There, it doesn't hurt us, but we do need to expend our funds.
Okay. So you're making sure you're communicating that with those agencies? Like, okay, we gotta get this done?
Correct. And we have offered some extensions to some of the organizations because of the restrictions they've been under, so.
Right.
Yes, we do have to expend our funds, though.
Okay. Thank you, Mary.
Donna?
And to follow up on Lisa's question, because that was one of the questions I had, but if they do not expend those funds, what happens to them? They go back to the federal government?
No, we can reallocate them to another program.
You can reallocate them. And is there a date that we have to do that by so that we are in compliance with?
We have three years.
Okay. Okay. And the other thing I just want to mention, I mean, I was looking at the report and all the different groups that we provide services to, and these are the folks and the organizations that really needed it the most. And, you know, when we look at, we're always talking about the diversity of our community and helping those people and, you know, and looking at the low income and the ethnic and racial backgrounds of some of the folks that we've been able to assist, I think we need to be really proud of that. But the organizations that are receiving these funds, I do believe that we need to be a little bit stricter on how they're spending and how long it's taking them to spend. Obviously, COVID changed the way we live the past year or so, but we can't continue to use that as an excuse, and so I would say I would like to see, you know, that money expended, and if not, I mean, obviously, reallocated. But for me, I think to look at those that were not able to perform.
All right, anybody else? All right, seeing none, this is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the floor to anybody in the audience who would like to address the CDBG funds, or what we call a Community Development Block Grant, and the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report that we will be sending to the federal government. This is the HUD money that we spend, housing and urban development. Sorry not to use an acronym. Anybody else? Anyone? Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the floor and ask for a resolution number, please.
Resolution number 5341, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the program year 2020 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5341 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, the last public hearing on our agenda tonight is a big one. And I see they brought in a heavy hitter to cover this one. So Mr. Tice?
Mayor, members of council. So this agenda item is a revision to your PAD So this agenda item is a revision to your PAD residential design standards. If you recall, council requested that staff create a new set of, uh, or some standards that we could apply to the build-to-rent developments to avoid having to continue to ask for exceptions from the PAD standards. You know, the build-to-rent residential developments are kind of, uh, were a new development product for Casa Grande, and of course, the first one is now under construction at Treckel and, and Cottonwood. But it was, there's kind of a unique, yes?
No.
No?
I think it was feedback.
Oh, feedback, sorry. They're kind of, um, a unique product in that they're a hybrid between a single-family development and a apartment complex. They're, of course, designed just to be rented, uh, and not owned. So as we looked at, uh, the challenge of creating some new standards for that residential product, we really looked to our current residential design standards for PADS, which were created in 2003, so they're pretty dated, 18 years old. And one thing. Down arrow. Thank you. The one thing that we, um, noticed is that we virtually had no standards at all for any kind of multifamily development in our PAD design standards. Their real focus for the PAD design standards was simply on residential subdivisions, standard residential subdivisions. Yeah. So you can see that, um, what you see on the screen is the full scope of the regulations that we have in our existing residential design guidelines for multifamily. Um, it's very vague, very general. And so, as staff looked at this, what we decided that we should do is to not only develop standards for the build-to-rent, but also create some standards for the multifamily developments, uh, that of course are being proposed, uh, for Casa Grande and that you'll be seeing coming, uh, forward in the near future. So as we looked at that, you know, you know, these are some of the product types that we envision that are going to be, uh, proposed and developed in Casa Grande in the very near future. Some of these are the top rows, the build-to-rent products. The next row are various types of, of multifamily. So we, we attempted then to modify our PAD design standards to create standards that we could apply to each of these product types. The one thing that we did not do is we did not really modify, make any significant changes to the rules that would apply to single-family PADS. Your typical residential subdivisions, PADS, those standards remained in place. Uh, we, we kind of rearranged the regulations, um, and made some editorial changes to clarify some, some verbiage, but really no significant changes whatsoever to the single-family PAD Our new set of regulations, uh, which are a bit longer than the 2003, uh, but they have four sections. Section one is the single-family and multifamily PAD layout and design standards, some general design standards, such as open space requirements, perimeter wall requirements, signage requirements, that we would apply across the board to both single-family and multifamily PADS. Section two is the section that relates to the single-family PADS, the section that really was not modified, uh, um, no significant modifications. Section three is our brand-new section related to multifamily developments and build-to-rent. And lastly, we moved the exceptions, uh, to the last, uh, part of the document, where today, the, the document actually leads off with exceptions. So for section one, uh, the, what you'd find, um, today, as well as in the 2003 version, is really open-space standards, streetscape entrances, perimeter walls, a reference to school sites. Really no change there, other than to, uh, kind of rearrange it. Section two, again, that's the single-family layout and design standards. As I mentioned, lot sizes to single-family, no change, still, um, can go down to 6,000, but any lots below seven, you have to have an equal number of, of, of more than eight. So there's no change to the lot sizes, no change to the setbacks. On housing product, um, there, there are no changes. However, staff did consider streamlining the process a little bit to have housing product reviewed at a, at a, administratively, at a staff level versus taking it to planning commission. Today, we take it to those to planning commission. They're fairly routine. Planning commission does, uh, take public comment. So our consideration was allowing it to be done at a staff level with appeal rights to planning commission, and even appeal rights of the planning commission decision back to city council. So, uh, but we did not make that change. We left it just like it is today, but we may be coming forth in the future with, uh, that recommended change, um, when we make some additional code revisions. So here's the, uh, section that really, uh, was modified. It was that section three, multifamily developments. We created three categories of, of multifamily developments. The medium density, which is up to 12 dwelling units per acre. You can see that build-to-rent is now classified as a medium-density multifamily development. Prior, we were treating them as a single-family and trying to apply the single-family rules. We're no longer doing it. We're now treating them as a medium-density multifamily, very similar to projects that might be duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, condominiums, townhomes, and manufactured home parks. All are in that kind of density range, up to 12 DUs per acre. Uh, higher-density, um, uh, projects might be ones that we'd find in our community, um, corridor areas of the general plan, maybe in the, um, in some of our business and commerce or higher den- higher-density, even some in our, limited in our neighborhood area. And then lastly, uh, um, urban density, which really would be mostly in our downtown, uh, or mixed-use area. We created some, uh, specific development standards for, uh, multifamily development, including building separation and setbacks, uh, buffer requirements, especially when adjacent to single-family, uh, residential, um, or even industrial, commercial. Wall fence screening requirements, open space, landscape, driveways, parking signage. So we have standards in the, uh, document that apply to each of these categories of We, we don't have, we don't have standard housing product review requirements like we would for single-family, but we do have some architectural review standards that we created that we could apply to both, uh, all types of multifamily, excuse me. Uh, with the, uh, desired review criteria of no adverse impact to the surrounding properties, aesthetically pleasing and interesting, and in conformance with architectural design characteristics that we've actually spelled out in the document. And if you've read it, you've seen that we've have, we've detailed some architectural design regarding, uh, porches, entryways, um, uh, roof lines, et cetera. Oh, there you go. There's our architectural design standards that we, we, and we actually kept, this is pretty interesting, we actually kept the, there is a height limit in our existing PAD design standards, where if you have multifamily close to single-family, uh, there's a max height of the building of 28 feet, which is essentially two stories, within 50 feet of the property boundary, and then you can go up once you get beyond 50 feet. We kept that standard in the, uh, in this new proposal as well. So there's a limitation on the building height, essentially the two stories, when you're adjacent to single-family residential, for the first 50 feet anyway. Uh, we, we kept the exception standards, so council still has the ability to grant exceptions where you think it's warranted. We don't think you're going to have a, a need to do exceptions, uh, for build-to-rent any longer. Uh, there may be other examples. We did modify, uh, exception two to clarify that there's an affordable housing exception that's applicable to our neighborhood strategy areas, which is our, uh, low and, uh, moderate-income neighborhoods really, as identified in the 2030 general plan. We did, uh, reach out with a stakeholder process, where we sent this proposal to all developers that we knew who were working on build-to-rent projects and apartment complexes, both consultants and developers, to get, uh, their review and input. Um, we, I, in general, everyone indicated that, uh, the proposal was acceptable. We did receive some feedback, um, uh, asking us to reduce a proposed 25-foot building setback from adjacent single-family residential zone property. Some applicants prefer that setback to be 20 feet or 15 feet. Staff, uh, did not make that change. We believe that the 25-foot setback when adjacent to single-family residentially-zone properties isn't an appropriate, uh, setback to ensure compatibility. Planning Commission did, uh, hold a public hearing and voted, uh, on 7-0 to recommend that the mayor and city council approve the adoption of these revised 2021 residential design standards for planned area developments. And that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Paul. Nice, nice work. And thank you for getting this done. Mr. Powell?
This is one of my happiest nights. And I really appreciate how you've done this, and, and we didn't lose the old, we have some new that were added to it, and I think Joseph had a lot to do with it. Uh, Joseph Horn, uh, you can take a bow. It, I was really, really happy that, uh, that this is available now. You guys, this is great. Good job.
Thank you.
Matt?
Yeah, this is interesting, it's a great time to do this. It's a great time to do this because, um, at the league conference, a lot of the seminars that we went to were on multifamily, affordable housing. And as I've said a few times, one way for the city to help with affordable housing is, we don't build houses, but you provide us some tools in this document to help us bring affordable housing to the city, so I'm glad to see that. Um, and the buffers to the single-family residential, I'm glad you kept those, because that's always a point of contention, which you, obviously, that's your job, so you know, you know what you're doing there, so I appreciate that. And, um, you guys have done a great job tonight. And, and the neat thing that I've been heard about and learning is the density of these type of projects. And I know that Casa Grande will like our rural character too, and, and an interesting concept I've been researching is that density in certain places allows us to keep our rural to heritage in other places, because we're getting the people, and the people that want to live in smaller areas are there concentrated, and then the people that want the bigger lots. So we still have a lot more rural character, instead of having 7,000 square-foot lots throughout the entire city. We can have big ones in places and smaller lots in other places. And the, the quality of these products, you know, is a lot of, uh, uh, questions that we get, but as we can see from our existing multifamily that have gone up in the last few years, the projects we've been seeing, the quality is there, the, the aesthetics are there. It's not, it's something you want in your community, to provide people other housing options, because we talk about it all the time, with all these new jobs that are coming to town, with all the new people that are coming down, we need places for them to live. And, and, uh, a great concept was that people refer to multifamily renters and single-family renters as temporary, uh, members of our community, but studies show that most of them rent in an area for two to three years to make sure that's where they want to live, and they end up buying a home in this area and become permanent residents of the community. So we have to shift our thinking of who the people are that are renting, uh, in these areas. It's, you know, it's, it's a great thing, and it's a great way for people to transition into our community, and younger people to transition into our community to become homeowners. So, again, great job on this, because now we don't have to make 800 exceptions, but that's a, you know, not really that many, but now we have a great way to do it. So thank you guys very much.
I, and I thank you for the work, because I think it does make it, it makes it easier for people to understand, and it, it makes it easier for us to understand it. And it's time, it's time that we do that.
Paul, I did have a question. Did you get any positive comments back from the developers you sent it to?
I'm going to ask Joe to answer that, because he made most of that contact.
Yeah, most of it was positive. So the only pushback we had was that perimeter setback for, for the most part, and, uh, and that's, we were expecting, so. But most of it, uh, was all positive. It's starting to be implemented in the plans that are being submitted now, or that were submitted while we were actually working on this, so.
Cool.
Uh, we'll, we'll see if we have any problems once we get through those reviews, though.
Right, right.
And, and Mayor, this, yeah, this is Lisa.
Go ahead, go ahead, Lisa.
And I'm going to just agree with what you all have talked about. Obviously, we know the demand for multifamily housing. We were all at the conference, and, and there were many sessions on the demand and the needs for this in our community. So, um, this is perfect timing, and we know as our community grows, we have to have these housing options. So it's great to have these standards, and I just want to make sure, though, you know, we, it, it should be happening at the baseline, but, you know, you, you still want to have kind of like with, with some of the other, um, buildings that we have in our community, there's got to be a little flexibility too, and, you know, because how are people going to read some of this? Even when I was reading section C on the architectural design, you know, you know, when you read the criteria is as follows, no adverse effect to the surrounding properties and uses, is aesthetically pleasing and interesting, well, that, that worries me a little, because we've had this in the past, where, what, you know, adverse effect on surrounding properties, where some, some, um, people don't want apartment complexes going next to them, so is that considered an adverse effect? And, you know, how are people going to read some of that? So I just want to make sure, you know, we, you know, we, we are, are open and we're working with these builders too, and bringing these products to our community, because it is so critical, as we get more and more jobs and need, you know, workforce housing, and people to live in our community, not, you know, commute to, you know, Phoenix or whatever, um, you know, it, it's such a, a critical part of, of the, our growth, so. So I don't know if you can answer my question on this whole thing, that, 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 that statement there where it says no adverse effect to the surrounding properties, is that someone that is in a subdivision next door and says that it's an adverse effect to them? I mean, is that what, how someone could read that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Fitzgibbons, um, that, that's a great, um, observation. And though, although we do have those three kind of general design standards, review criteria for the architecture, it, it is a little subjective, um, by, uh, intentionally, and so both, you know, planning commission as a group has to kind of consider any opposition from neighbors, um, regarding the adverse impact. But, uh, you know, I think most adverse impact, it's not about the, the type of residents that are going to be there, it's about, you know, the bulk and scale of the buildings, whether or not, you know, they blend in with the neighborhood architecture, whether or not the height is appropriate. So I, I don't know if we can really avoid the subjective nature of this unless we went to very detailed criteria, like we do with our single-family housing product. So by nature, it's intended to be a little more subjective. And yes, I think, you know, from time to time, we will have people oppose the, uh, the multifamily. Probably most of that will be at the zoning level and not at the major site plan level, where these standards will be applied. But, you know, I, I think that's kind of the, the nature of the, uh, of the beast, that, uh, you know, we have to consider adverse impact and, and do our best to mitigate it when we think it's going to occur.
Right. And, and you guys do a great job at that, you, you really do. So, um, but no, no, I appreciate it, and I know this is definitely timely, we, you know, it, it, I'm, I'm happy to see this.
And Lisa, this is actually within the residential design standard, right? It's not talking about the, the zoning piece, which would be the part that would impact a neighbor based on what they think the other apartment complex is going to bring in. So it's kind of, it's at a different level.
Right. Well, it still could be this level a little bit, but yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, though.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right, this is a public hearing, and, um, we're actually looking at resolution number five- 5342 and also ordinance number 1397.17.54. We can do the public hearing for both?
The public hearing is really only for the zoning piece. No, the resolution is, is solely a technical piece where we make it part, we make it a public record, and the ordinance actually adopts it. So our public hearing is on the ordinance.
On the ordinance itself. All right. Thank you, Brett. That's why you're here. Appreciate it. Keep us straight. Anybody have any comments from the public? I have opened the floor for any public comment. All right, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll call for a resolution number first, Resolution Number 5342.
When, when you ready? I've got a question or a comment.
Oh, you want to make the comment now? Go ahead.
Sure. I, I think one of the biggest things that have happened over the last year to year and a half is the addition of having, if something's next, compatibility. And, and that's where we get into a lot of the issues with people that have really high-end homes and some that do differently, and, and everybody is, as long as you're compatible with who's next to you or it's been worked out, I think that really helps avoid a lot of the complaints and those type of things we get. Good word.
All right. Anything else? Anyone? All right, then I will call for Resolution Number, please. Gloria?
Resolution Number 5342, a resolution of the mayor and council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, declaring as public record that certain document entitled 2021 Residential Design Standards for Planned Area Developments.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of Resolution Number 5342 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, the second half to L4 is approval of ordinance number 1397.17.54. Any further discussion on that item? We've already held the public hearing. Well, the public hearing was on the first part.
Public hearing was on this part.
Oh, on this part? Okay. I'll, I'll get it, Brett. I promise. All right, so not seeing any more comments, then I will call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance Number 1397.17.54, an ordinance of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting 2021 residential design standards for planned area development by reference, amending City of Casa Grande City Code, Section 17.40.015, to reflect the adoption of the new standards, establishing severability of the various sections of the ordinance, and establishing an effective date.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance 1397.17.54 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, that is tonight's business, and we have one item left, two really, is reports. And Lisa, I'm going to start with you.
Actually, I don't have too much, Mayor. I, I think you and Donna are going to report on the homeless count. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to do it on Friday, but we, of course, have been planning it for several weeks, and I know Mary Allen is there today. And even though I wasn't there, I really do want to thank everyone that just, you know, coordinated this. So I'm, I'm anxious to hear how everything went, but I do want to thank Mary, you know, her staff, the police department. Chief Leos has been so wonderful, as you guys know, in all the homeless efforts, and Sun Life, working with them, trying to get staff out there in the, in the fire department. So even though I wasn't there, I know I've been, you know, trying to be active in all this, so I'm looking forward to hear how it, how it went, and I'm glad you guys were able to get out there. So thank you, and that's it for me.
You missed our 5:00 AM roll call.
I know.
All right, Donna, we'll go with you next.
All right, well, and as Lisa said, we had the homeless count on Friday. I felt it went really well. It, you know, unfortunately, you walk away feeling very blessed with what you have. Everybody was very appreciative. I know that at one location, there was a small hut that was built, and I think five people walked out of that when we woke them up at like 5:30 in the morning, and, and they were very appreciative, but they were, you know, could tell where they were at in their lives. So, so it was disappointing, but I hope that we got good information. Mary did a great job, along with Wendy, at the police department, and, you know, we didn't have as many volunteers as we've had in the past, but we still got the job done. So I'm looking forward to finding out some information about that.
Get the number.
Yeah. I did want to mention that also, right after that, I came to City Hall where we had the last final trust board meeting. Hats off to Scott and his staff. I really want to thank Ronan Curry and Connie Wright, who has been part of the trust board, along with past Mike Henderson. They have done a really good job, and, and I will personally say educated me about, you know, the ins and outs of, of what we need to do to make sure that our employees are, you know, are kept safe. And so you'll be getting a report, you know, follow-up on that. I also, I wanted to publicly thank Kent Volkmann from the county attorney's office. He did an excellent job at the board of supervisors meeting, talking about the census 2020. Found it very interesting what he talked about. So if you haven't had the opportunity to listen to that, you can go back, but he did a really good job and broke that down. The police department has the beat team. They've had two meetings. There's a couple coming up next week. I've heard really good results back from different folks that have attended, so. And then also, congratulations, the Alxides here, they did the first responders dinner, and we had two, Officer Scott Tracy, and then Communications, Elisa Ramirez, that received awards, and I heard that that was well-attended by, by many of the folks around the county, so. And then lastly, I know Holly's here. I was so proud when I watched Channel 3 last night. If you have not seen the story that they did about small communities and business owners rallying back from, you know, COVID, they really highlighted Casa Grande, talked to four or five local businesses, the Chamber, Holly, and it, it was just a great article. I've had a number of people send me, you know, comments about how, it talks about how small towns can be a good thing, and it made us really proud.
It aired twice, actually. It aired twice last night.
It, it aired on three and five, I believe, but I saw it on three, so.
I saw it twice on five.
Great job. Great job, Holly. And that's it.
Thank you, Donna. Mr. Lavender?
Yes, Mayor, I attended the Casa Grande Alliance Youth Leadership Forum last Wednesday. They hosted Congressman O'Halloran. It was a very informative event. Students talked about different projects they're working on. The congressman gave them some great ideas on how they can get involved in the community. I also wanted to congratulate somebody who was born and raised in our community, John Roberts, who was our high school quarterback back in the 90s, who is now the head football coach at Vista Grande for winning his first game. It's great to see people who came through our system coming back now to contribute. So congratulations to John. Also, the Vista Grande principal, Gwenda Sully, is retiring next week, and thank her for all her service to our community.
John has a proud dad, too.
He sure does. He sure is.
Mr. Powell?
I would just comment, the underpass, you go through it a lot, Matt. There's no color being put on the walls. It looks like there are rocks along, that are there, and they're kind of brown and buff. It, it just kind of, it needs some color. Even if you walk through the, anytime in the desert, there's a lot of green and other things that are there. So I'm hoping that will change. You know, I'm not the artist, and, but I'm hoping that's in the future and planned to happen.
It's not done yet.
No, I know it's way from done.
Go ahead, Gloria.
It's not on the agenda. I can't discuss it.
Oh, sorry.
But I can send them a plan.
We can talk later, Mr. Powell.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I don't want to get in trouble.
Yeah. Matt, how about you?
October 23rd, Youth Commission Day of Shredding at Pinal County, First American Credit Union on Pinal, 1001 North Pinal. And at the Youth Commission meeting, we had Colin from the PIO office come take pictures of all of the members, so thank you for that. And Ellen from the Finance Department did a great job telling the commission about how their budgeting works and everything. So we appreciate them coming. And I had on my list to talk about the underpass, but I've gotten compliments from a lot of people, even just the paint that's on there and the very first phase of what's going in down there looks wonderful. And I want to thank the Arts and Humanities Commission, and especially Gloria with her leadership of that commission and all the grants, and I know there's more coming. So thank you very much. It makes a big difference, and it's going to be a very, very awesome when it's all completed.
Bob?
Mayor, I was out of town for about 10 days on vacation, and the old adage, absence makes the heart grow fonder, I think applies true. I came back to town and, and things that I knew were going on just kind of jumped out at me. And I, I was so impressed to see the, the development going on at Truckland Cottonwood, the road widening on Peart, the underpass painting, the, the progress on Rotary Park, not to mention all the other housing developments that are going on around town. And I, I just wanted to say, we, Casa Grande makes a very good first impression as far as being in a progressive, active, forward city, even if it's after 55 years of living here. I was impressed. That's my report.
Excellent. Well, I'm going to go away for 10 days, and hopefully it makes my heart grow fonder when I come back.
Sure will.
Because I'm tired right now.
Don't feel bad, he's going to Hawaii.
Poor guy.
So I did attend the, the homeless count. I just want to thank Chief Leos and, and Chief McCor, if you could please pass that along and to your other officers who were there, really do appreciate their presence. They, they make that process and of going out and, you know, waking people up at 5:00 in the morning a little more comfortable. You know, we feel, we feel safe with the officers there, and so I really want to thank them for, for everything that they, they did. Plus, they, they also help us in how to approach people as well in that situation. So it's, they have a, they have a skill set there, so, and we do appreciate them. Also, the police chief from the Grick was there as well, and we really appreciate his, his presence as well. I did want to call out the, the Hila Indian, River Indian community and thank them for the two grants that they just awarded the city. We got a $10,000 grant for the mini grants, K through 12 teachers grant, and we also got $25,000 for the Union Pacific Railroad Underpass, which may now allow us to put some landscaping back in that we had to take out due to budgetary issues. So thank you to the, to the Hila Indian community for, for their support of our community. Then I'm just, I would call out on the, Chief Pinal, Chief Pinal has a couple of things going on. They have this career expo that you can get to online. It has videotapes. So if you know any young people looking for, maybe trying to figure out what they want to do with the rest of their life, hook them up with this site. They can watch videos of people who actually have the job, and they talk about how much they get paid, they talk about the job and the requirements, the education requirements you have to go through. It's really a well-done piece. And then also, the AARP experience and Third Corps reading, they are struggling to get volunteers. Obviously, some of that's due to COVID concerns with the older folks who normally sign up for this and then actually being in, in the classroom with the younger kids. So there's some concerns there. And then also, our mayor's reading program can also use some volunteers. So if you know anybody who's interested in helping our young people, please get ahold of Amber Ken at our library or Cheryl Chase. And then the Casa Grande Chamber of Commerce Fall Golf Tournament is November 5th. If you haven't signed up, you can look at on the website for the chamber. And I know I have too many things to talk about. I apologize. We are going to be redoing our strategic planning. We've set up a retreat, so we will be getting together as a, as a management staff and working on that strategic plan. So if anybody has anything you want to tell your council member to make sure we, we cover in that, that might be your opportunity to do that now. And then also, I just did want to call out, your, your council and, and your mayor both were recognized by the Capital Times as, as the 2021 Leaders of the Year in Public Policy for Economic Development. And so we, we, I received this today, actually, this is our, our certificate of recognition. And so I wanted to congratulate the council and.
Congratulations to you.
And, you know, just, it's a group effort, it's not just one person, so congratulations. They will be doing it virtual, the meeting. Let's see. Lucid Air, just to give you all an update on Lucid, they will be doing some public, I'm going to say, therefore, media and other special guests on the 27th, 28th, and 29th this month in September. My guess is, and I'm speculating here, is that they probably will be announcing their first production vehicles that week. So that's purely a guess, but keep your eye on the newspaper, and hopefully we'll see some, some actual production vehicles come off the line. I know they're going to allow some of their guests at these events, 27, 28, 29, to drive one of their cars. So that could be pretty exciting, and unfortunately, I won't be here. So, I know, I miss all the fun stuff. Yeah, thanks, Matt. Also, an update on the PRTA, which is your Pinal Regional Transportation Authority. Last week, the board just approved their TIP, which is their transportation plan, and so that's been completed. We're working on intergovernment agreements now to also then set up all of the projects that were approved in the RTA, which was voted on by the voters. And each one of those projects has to have an IGA. So we have three of them for the city of Casa Grande. It's Thornton Road, it's Peters Road, and it's Cortson TI, which is the traffic interchange at Cortson and I-10. So those are the three primary intergovernment agreements that we will be working on with staff. Actually, the staff's already sent it back to the PRTA. We're just waiting for them to finalize it and come back. And that should set us up so that once the Supreme Court approves our appeal, and then we can move forward with the now-collected $64 million that's sitting in an escrow account, which is insane amount of money. Also, just to let everybody know, and we talked a little bit about it, but we're working with, hopefully, and this is preliminary, but we're hoping to, to work with a local developer to perform a land swap with them so that we will gain about 10 to 12 acres south of our rec center, and we would pick up that 12 acres, and then we could actually put a pool in there. Don't hold me to that, but that's, that's something that we could look at. So it adds, it doubles the size of our property because we're actually sitting on eight acres now, and so that adds to it, and that just adds, makes it more of a kind of a regional park concept, which really would help the whole neighborhood, I think. And really, it's pretty exciting that we can actually make that land swap and get that done. I've said enough, so I will stop. COVID's still here. Please get vaccinated, and I'm just asking you to vaccinate. I'm not telling you to get vaccinated. The numbers are coming down, so that's good. I think that's just a matter of time that, once it runs through the, our younger generation, that it probably will start to, to abate. But it's the same trends for the.
But it's the same trends for the state as well as the county. So that's good news, and that's all I have. Anybody else have anything else you want to add?
I have something on your trip.
All right, then I will adjourn tonight's council meeting, and thank you, everybody, for coming.